Good evening. It is Monday, August 14th. This is the Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have a little smaller group. We do have quorum. There are four of us here. Dr. Hurst is joining us via Zoom. And Mrs. Baldwin will be joining us in about 10 minutes. The first item here to act on is the July 10th, 2023 Board of Education Minutes. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Second?
Yeah.
Any corrections to the minutes? I have one. On the second page, a little more than halfway down in the paragraph starting Mrs. Peck. Mrs. Peck commented that she had heard that in some of the other participating districts. I think she was talking about our own district. So my suggested correction is that we strike in some of the other participating districts. And then there is a concern by a teacher. I think she was sharing a concern from a teacher within our district that Dr. Freeman was able to respond to. Anything else? Dick, did you have anything for the minutes? No, okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye.
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 Abstention.
Okay. Dick, are you in favor of the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then Arnold is abstaining, as he was not here. All right. Number four is public comments for topics on the agenda. Our meeting agenda has been slightly updated, so I just want to, based on some policies that the board passed last month. So, public comments for topics on the agenda, limited to three minutes per comment, total of 30 minutes. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about their views. It is the role of the board to listen to public comments. The board will refrain from answering questions or engaging in dialogue with the commenters. I do remind our viewing public that there are also ways to communicate with us. Email, our addresses are all on the website. But this is just in terms of public comment, to make sure that everyone gets a chance who wishes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board for public comments on topics on the agenda this evening? All right. Hearing none. We're going to go on to review and approve of expenditures of the month. And you'll have to keep on listening to me, because that is me. This is, so we are reviewing and approving expenditures for the month of July in two years. So, the first review of financials is for July 2023 financial reports for fiscal year 2022-23, to finish off that year. Expenditures for the month of July 2023, as regards the fiscal year 2223 year, were $403,918.60. Expenditures and encumbrances through the end of July were 99.99% of the budget, as compared to 99.99% of the budget in 2021-22. Our report indicates that salaries approximated the prior budget year, as did purchase services. Employee benefits were slightly lower, and tuition, supplies, capital, and transportation were higher. The total of payments listed in the warrant is $1,076,927.44. The board reviewed this report and the warrants extensively in the Operations Committee just prior to this. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments on this report?
I have none.
Okay. And I will note, later in our agenda, we will be acting on budget transfers to finalize that fiscal year 2223 budget and budget lines. So, is there then, please, a motion to approve the July 2023 financial reports as they relate to fiscal year 2223?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second, Arnold, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all in favor. And next, the July 2023 financial reports as they relate to fiscal year 2324. So, the year that we are in now. Expenditures for the month of July were $4,443,731.67. Expenditures and encumbrances through the end of July were 9.48% of the budget, as compared to 8.18% in the 2223 year. Budget expenditures approximated the prior year for salaries, employee benefits, supplies and materials, and transportation, and were slightly higher than prior year for purchase services, tuition, and capital. Again, this is just the first month of the year. We did, again, review this report and warrants in the Operations Committee just prior to this. Are there any questions or comments on this set of reports from my colleagues? All right. So, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the July 2023 financial reports as they relate to fiscal year 2324.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's everybody. Thank you. All right. Up to communications. We received three communications today, at least as a board in general. Three different communications that spoke, essentially were referencing, I think, the request that had been put before us to review five books. We're going to be reviewing those at a meeting in September. But these three communications, the themes that they wrote about in support of inclusive libraries, do not support the challenge to the five books and oppose individuals having a say about what their children can read or cannot read. I didn't receive any other communications in the past month. I don't know if anyone else has any others to report.
None.
None? Okay. So that is our report out on communications.
I would just add to that, that, you know, as we have the discussion around the challenge books, that those individuals may have thought that we'd be discussing this tonight. There's an opportunity at our September meeting to have your voice heard.
Student representatives are off for the summer, so we don't have any reports. So we are already at number eight. Dr. Freeman?
We're making great time, until this moment. I actually have a brief report this evening. The board is aware that the official enrollment date is October 1st, but at this time each summer, we like to give you a snapshot of where we stand with enrollment and the breakout that we chose to use tonight, which you have in your packets in front of you. While it shows grade level enrollment in all 13 grade levels, it highlights the elementary level and breaks the elementary level out into class sections as well. What I want to begin with is that while we have run into some distribution challenges, at this moment, the average class size K through 4 in Guilford Public Schools projects to be at 17.3. I want to continue to name and to appreciate this board and this board's recognition of the community investment in really positive class sizes. 17.3 is a really positive average class size. Now, we know, and we talk about this frequently, that an average doesn't tell a whole or a complete or often an accurate story. So while that average is a really positive class size, we know that we have class settings that are spread across four neighborhood locations and five different grade levels at the elementary level. So to look at kindergarten enrollment specifically, while the kindergarten enrollment this year is actually below what it was at last year, the distribution presented some challenges. And so I am informing the board tonight that above the 12 kindergarten positions that we had budgeted in this budget, we are actually going to be filling 13 kindergarten positions. Again, it's all about the distribution. But if we maintained three positions of kindergarten at Lakes, we would be opening on the first day of school, knowing that we had kindergarten class sections at 19 and 20. And we've made a commitment to this community that we would try to keep those numbers in the mid-teens rather than in the high teens or the low 20s. What you look at with this distribution, then, is you look at Cox, which has some high kindergarten enrollment that is pushing the high end of that limit. You look at Jones and Lakes that are coming right in at the 15s that we're targeting, and you're looking at Leet that is coming in in low numbers. And that, to me, points out the real sophistication in a decision that this board made at your last meeting. If we think about the open choice that we have approved that would start in first grade, when we look at this distribution, this tells us that if these numbers stay in this range, that we could be offering up to six seats for first graders next year that would all fall at Leet, which would bring the Leet class sizes right up to that 15 that we target and wouldn't push any class sizes anywhere in the district into that range that we begin to think is getting larger than we're comfortable with. It also tells us that we would be able to have all of those students and their families be part of a cohort and a natural support system by offering all of those seats at one school location. We would make transportation the most efficient. We would be able to focus that first-year experience on those families in one location with one group of teachers. We will continue to keep an eye on Cox, but to add a fourth section at Cox now brings those numbers down to a degree that is then becoming problematic as well. And so, we've already increased to 13. We're being really cautious about increasing to 14 sections at, right? And again, for a class that's actually smaller than the class that came in last year. And so, these numbers, when you look at them across district, you've got a low of 12, which won't continue to be that low after first grade, should we have interest in the open choice seats that we make available, and a high in one of our fourth grade classes that is sitting at a 20. You don't see any classes today in K or Grade 1 that break out of the teens. They all fall within the teens. And again, I know what Guilford expectations are, but to have all of our first and kindergarten classes below 20 is, again, a really positive number. There are few districts in the state of Connecticut that can say that they've got all their Ks and 1s that stay within the teens.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Is there a consideration of moving one of the Leet kindergarten teachers to Lakes instead of hiring?
Yes. Yeah, we really looked at that as well.
Because, I mean, we would be within, we know that kids get added. We know that, right? But, but, but...
But that did sort of...
It looks like Cox and Leet are...
They are. And to move one from Leet to Cox would now bring the Leet numbers up into the 18s and 19s while you bring the Coxes down. And so, the real...
No, 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 sorry. I'm suggesting Leet to Lakes.
Oh, yes. We absolutely looked at that as well and thought that, again, that would bring the Leet class sizes. And again, we're worried about influx. So, we'd be bringing the Leet classes up to 19s and then hoping that nobody else moved into the Leet community, because we had just taken one of those positions away. We absolutely looked at that before adding the position. And, and we're looking at it again with Cox in mind. But Lakes was running slightly higher than Cox was in their numbers even when we made that decision. It's not a perfect science. It always leaves, and again, we always look at the average, that we look at the lows and the highs. And this year, we have the open choice to look at as you look at the K numbers, which we'd never had before. October 1st is the, right? We've got about two more weeks of live time to be looking at it before students arrive. But very often, this will be the final look. And then, again, on the very bottom of the page on the left, you do have the class sizes at Baldwin, at Adams, and at Guilford High School, but with less detail than we provide, obviously, at the elementary level. And we had a graduating class at the high school this year that I think was about 280 diplomas that we handed out in the rain. So we had a large class move out and a smaller class move in at the high school.
Other questions?
I guess my only, to the open choice point, I guess the only concern would be, I was, I think in a perfect world, it would have been distributed evenly among the schools to benefit all students, because it is, it's a great program that's going to benefit our Guilford kids a lot. So, yeah, I just would hope that, I know every year, it's, like, as you said, a guessing game, but the idea of that cohort all being at Leet means 75% of the kids won't get to meet that cohort until they get to Baldwin, so.
Well, but remember, and my hope would be, and we could look at different years here, right? You could go right along, left to right. My hope would be that in the next year, the distribution doesn't, right? And so in year two, if six students are going to Leet this year, my real hope is that the year after, we've got a similar dynamic where we can invite five or six or eight students, but to Jones next time. And again, if you look at, if you track across, you could play that out and say, oh, this year, we would have invited here, and that year, we would have invited there, and you could see where that was. Exactly right. And hopefully, as we do that ramp up. But one of the things that we've heard from other districts is what you want to avoid is offering four seats and making it one at each of your elementaries, because now those students could end up feeling isolated.
Logistics, too.
Right. So I'm excited for those six families. You're right. It doesn't bring the benefit to all of our Guilford elementaries in this one year. I'm hoping when it becomes a five-year model, we don't end up saying, all of the choice students keep going to Leet. If that's true, we're going to have to do something different. Yeah, it's a really important question. Thank you.
Other thoughts, questions? All right.
So also, this time every year, we give you an update on hiring. And I had the report all ready to go at 4 o'clock, and I was about to tell you that as of 4 o'clock, we have made offers and have verbal agreements to fill all of our certified positions. There are some, and hiring has gone later into the summer than it usually does. There are some of those positions where we've made an offer and the offer has been accepted, but it happened so late in the summer that a teacher is being held in a current district and won't be joining us for the first day of school. I was ready to make that report. And then, late this afternoon, we received a resignation, and we now have a one certified position that we just learned of today. It will likely be vacant officially tomorrow, and we need to begin working to fill that position. I say all of that with an asterisk on that, because while we have all but one of our certified positions filled, that's with some modifications. I reported out to you last time that we've stopped efforting the filling of the two World Language positions at the elementary level, because we didn't have a sufficiently deep pool to feel confident about filling those two positions. And the World Language position at the high school that we advertised as a World Language position rather than as a specific position, we have made an offer to fill that position. It is not to an individual who is certified in Mandarin or Japanese or Hindi, but it is to somebody who is going to be bringing Italian language to Guilford High School. So as we sort of started to worry about, as we got later in the process, the pool was very small, and we did not have, we didn't have candidates in some of those other languages that I named that we were confident making an offer to. We are very excited about the individual who's going to be bringing Italian. So while we expand our language offerings, we didn't expand into some of the directions that we thought we would expand. Dr. Goss and I have already talked about working on getting some meetings locally with some other districts who do offer some of those other languages and trying to see if we can trade some seats in an Italian or an Arabic classroom for some seats in a Mandarin or a Japanese classroom. So we're not giving up on making that offer, but we hired, we hired based on talent rather than on certification, and we're confident that we've made the right decision. We're going to begin offering Italian 1 opportunities at both Adams and the high school, and we expect to be able to grow that program in the next few years.
So this individual will be at Adams and at the high school?
For, at least for this first year, yes. And that won't continue once we get, right? Once we can build up those numbers. But it would be a way to offer the, yes. So, and we'll look at whether or not we can continue, how we will continue to staff that. Would there be an opportunity to take Italian 1 at Adams long-term? It'll depend on how those numbers break out. All of that leads me to want to comment on the teacher shortage generally. What we are seeing happening is that we are, in Guilford, we used to have, I think, two kinds of teacher vacancies. We have retirements, and those were the bulk of our vacancies. Teachers would come to Guilford, spend a year, spend a career in Guilford, and the position would become open when they retired. And then sometimes, we had early-career folks who came in and decided that teaching wasn't for them. They'd stay for a year or two, and that they would move out. We continue to have those two kinds of openings. And both of those, in fact, may be increasing a little bit, because public, being a public educator has been really challenging for the last few years. And Guilford is not insulated from that. And so, I think we're seeing more young career professionals who are deciding that teaching isn't for them. And since the pandemic, we've seen some people retiring earlier than they would normally. But because of the teacher shortage in Guilford, we're now beginning to see another kind of vacancy that's happening in Guilford. There are teacher openings all over the state, and teachers are in a very different position than they were a few years ago. When we used to advertise for an elementary classroom position, we might receive 200 applications for one elementary position that opened. What's now happening is that mid-career teachers are finding openings that are closer to their home. And while they might never have left Guilford before, they're surrounded by three or four districts that are walking distance from their home. And districts are beginning to offer signing bonuses for teachers as well. So while we continue to have retirements, and they may be wrapped up a little bit, we're continuing to have early-career resignations. We're also now beginning to see some of our really strong, reliable mid-career teachers who are moving because of opportunities that are popping up in the state. They're reducing a commute, they're getting closer to home, or they're picking up a signing bonus to go somewhere else, or they're going to a district that just has a higher pay scale than we have. All of those things have been occurring. We're going to be bringing in a class of new teachers that is sitting at 30 or 31? New hires that we'll be onboarding this year. It's not the highest ever, but it's right up there. It's a significant amount of turnover that we've experienced this year. To that point, at the board, we often, during budget season, talk about retirement savings. We're going to have to be really careful about that, because we are seeing fewer early-career teachers, but more teachers. As we have openings, we've got teachers with nine and 10 years of experience and would love to be in Guilford. In the past, we might have been really hesitant to offer that, because we had such competitive talent in other places. As the pools tighten, we'll be hiring more teachers with experience and at higher steps on the salary scale to remain competitive, to get the best candidate. And so, we may not be generating the retirement savings. On more than one occasion this year, we've seen one of those mid-career vacancies created and had to hire at a higher step to fill that position with a really exciting candidate, rather than just having retirements and being able to hire at a lower step on the salary scale. So, again, we're confident that we'll have all of the positions locked up. Jason's office is working with the principals to actually begin working on long-term subs for the year. We know that we have some teachers who are pregnant and will need to be away, so we're beginning to make those hires at this time. But again, received a notification today, and I'm not convinced it will be the last one before we get to the first day of school. There's a lot of superintendents calling each other. I have awkward conversations like I've never seen before.
Question back to the World Language teacher in Italian. I'm assuming, for instance, every high school student pretty much has a schedule already for this coming year? Is that correct? And so what, how do we integrate a new language that no one has signed up for?
I'm going to ask Ms. Chaff to come up and help us with that. I think the opportunity is that students are given an opportunity to make some reconsiderations at this time, but I'll let Julia speak to it.
The email came out today.
If you had a high school student...
Hello, everyone. So, we are knowing that we didn't have it as a course request. We do our scheduling in the spring. We didn't have Italian as a course request at the time. So, the position currently is split between GHS and Adams. It's being paid for out of the GHS budget, and that will allow us to sort of build the capacity of the program, because we're going to offer it to one group of 7th graders, one group of 8th graders. And Garen and I both sent out messages to the community at the same time today to start to solicit interest in the course. The downside to that is there's a limited number of periods that we can offer it, because we're splitting the position with Adams. However, our goal between now and the ad drop period, which happens at the beginning of every school year, that's that two-week period at the beginning of the year, is to get the word out that it's available. We are encouraging students to consider taking more than one language, if they're interested in that. But at the same time, we have, we have a very full Latin program. Probably exceeds, we probably have more students in Latin than we can actually fill in terms of the teacher load. We have a very full Arabic program as well. So I think what's going to happen, and what we're hoping is going to happen, is that we'll have some students sort of elect to take Italian this year, start their Italian study. But we're positioned in such a way that we can shift, potentially offering some additional offerings in Arabic if we need to in years to come. So this year is all about, this is a new option. We're building it late. And so, by next year, we're hoping to have it be a much more robust program, 7 through 9 and 10 for sure, with the potential for adding an Italian 3. And then another thing that we're looking at is what do we do with the International Baccalaureate Language classes as well? We've been running some very small IB French classes. In order to qualify for IB French or IB Spanish, you have to take 1, 2, and 3 of the language. If we can flex that and offer what IB calls an ab initio course, which just is a fancy way of saying a beginning language course, then Italian could fulfill that role as well. And then we could potentially have more students, not only in the diploma program, but also taking an advanced, you know, a beginning but advanced language study in their junior and senior year. So, there's a lot of pieces at play here. We, just a reminder to all of you, last year, we had two French teachers who took on an additional teaching assignment. And so, our Spanish classes are very full. Our French classes are very full. We're hoping that by offering Italian, we can get those numbers a little bit more reasonably distributed. And we're recruiting students right now, between now and the first two weeks of school to fill in those three sections that we're offering.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just, I was just...
I almost feel like this is a public service announcement.
No, no, no. I know, or I don't know. I sometimes imagine what it's like to try to coordinate 1,100 student schedules. So the idea that you would have to then redo part of that over the next two weeks. But that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Other questions? Teacher vacancies, Italian, anything?
On the World Language subject, you know, we talked last meeting about the elimination at K through 4. One of the things that came through my mind, which I said right away, and actually got some remarks from some, from the public, that is, you know, software, you know, some kind of soft, you know, we were only talking about 60 minutes a week at K through 4. Is there any kind of supplemental courses that our kids in elementary could be taking? Is there any kind of supplemental courses that our kids in elementary could be taking to at least expose them to world language?
We want to look into that. I don't want to say yes now. I know that there are things that exist. But we want to make sure that they would meet the expectations that we have of using something like that in school. We want to be careful that it doesn't become used, like dropping a kid in front of a computer. And we, we want to make sure that we're working with the teachers association as well as we do that. We, we need to be careful that we don't use those things to then eliminate positions. And so some thoughtful conversations need to be had around it. And again, I think I mentioned also wanting to talk to other educators locally who may not be certified public school educators. But we've got a, a language resource right here in town that I want to talk with and do some brainstorming with. And so, yes, we need to explore those possibilities. We want to be really clear that we don't expect any of those alternatives to be in place for September 1st, right? We, we, we know how we're going to get through this year, and we've got some design and real thoughtful questions that we need to ask if we're going to find a way to do this. And we don't think that hiring is going to be the way that we get it done. And that's always been our go-to solution. Thank you for reminding us of that.
The only other thing I'll say is, it's, you know, we hear about it in the news every single day. If people haven't realized it already, we're very lucky to be staffed as well as we are. So job well done, everyone.
I'm sure that as we do this again, I'll be saying something like, we are fully staffed today. And as comparison, I want to, and I will name some other school district in the state that will be running hundreds of certified vacancies. So, yeah, even, even with, even with the late hiring that we're doing this summer, we're very, very fortunate and, and remain to a large degree insulated from the realities of the teacher shortage that other communities are experiencing. I also want to move on to one that is just completely and thoroughly good news. Last Monday and Tuesday, our leadership team had our annual administrative retreat. We pulled back away from the district for two full days. We met at the Mercy Center, Mercy on the Sea, right here in Madison. We were in a beautiful location. Our leadership team, when I talk about our leadership team, I mean all of our central office administrators, principals, assistant principals, special education coordinators, all together for two really thoughtful days. And we spent those two days focused on learning happening in the Guilford Public Schools. The three big pieces that we dove into and pieces that I was just really, really excited about. We spent a significant amount of time being led by two of our own Baldwin math teachers, looking at most recent work of Peter Lilidahl, who's doing some really exciting work specifically in math classrooms, but also looking at the ways that students participate in cooperative learning in, in classrooms. And unmaking some of the assumptions that we have about how classrooms work and turning some of those components on their head. Specifically this year, we had principals and we had teachers across the district who were reading Lilidahl's work and, and exploring some of those, those options. But specifically at Baldwin and Lee, we had a number of teachers who dove in really thoughtfully and, and really moved that, those strategies forward. So we had Ann Lombard and John Reinike, who joined a really intimidating room, right? All of the principals and assistant principals and superintendents in the district. And they came in and ran us through a classroom activity using those strategies. We're really excited about continuing that learning this year. We are really excited, Dr. Gosse and I, to, to put you as a board through one of those classroom experiences at one of your workshop meetings in the first half of this school year. So you get to experience some of those pivots that a number of teachers are making, that we'd like to see more teachers adopting. And what's really exciting about this is that this was grassroots. So there were a number of principals who were sort of reading the book and talking about it. But there were classroom teachers, and Ann Lombard, first among them, who was reading the book and going to their principals, who were reading the book and who were going to their principals, saying, I want to do this stuff in my classroom. Will you get me the things I need? And will you support me as I work on these strategies in my classroom? So we spent a significant amount of time working on that. And we've brought big-name presenters into our retreats before. Personally, it was just a lot of fun to watch our own teachers leading the learning of our principals in the district. That, that part was truly exciting. Another piece that we worked on is we, as we continue to think about the work around belonging in our school district and, and with, with open choice on, on the threshold for us. This is a conversation that we're not going to shy away from. We're not going to stop talking about. But as we talk about what it means and what it takes for every child to know that they belong in the Guilford Public Schools, how do we create opportunities for teachers to practice those skills and to build those muscles in what could be a really intimidating arena? We've seen this year, some of our teachers called out for doing that kind of work. If you talk about equity, or if you talk about diversity, or if you talk about social justice, those can be hot-button issues and, and teachers can be nervous about that. We have been working with a group out of the Harvard Graduate School of Education who have been developing a case model, um, um, practice where teachers get the opportunity to look at case studies in really structured facilitated ways to, to think and to say, when I want to do something really challenging in my classroom, how can I do it and be thoughtful and, and, and think about pitfalls before they happen in real time? Teaching is one of the very few professions where, once you finish your student teaching, there's very little time for deliberative practice. After you finish your student teaching, every day that you're working, you're working in front of real-life kids, people's children. There's, if you're a professional football player, you get to practice six days a week. And then you only go on the game field one time. You go out one day a week where it all counts. Every other time, you're in a weight room, you're on a practice field. And if you make mistakes, that's good. You learn from them. The case study model gives teachers an opportunity to learn from those mistakes and to practice and to build those muscles in low-stakes situations. So what was really fun about this piece is that we did have some of our partners from Harvard who were there, who were working with us. Sarah O'Brien from the Harvard Graduate School of Education was there, working with us. But again, running those, running the case study for us on that specific day were a number of our instructional coaches, coaches and principals who had practiced with Harvard, had planned for this together. And then they ran us through the case studies. Dr. Harrison was there for that, that, he was part of that. He was part of the planning, he was part of that rollout. So this year, as Dr. Harrison works more directly with teachers than he ever has in any other year, he's going to be working for three early release days and one full professional development day directly with teachers, pre-K through 12. But as Rydell is doing that, sort of the direct instructional component, principals and instructional coaches will then be giving teachers in PLC settings or in faculty meetings, the opportunity to practice and build those muscles by working on case studies. And Dr. Gosse and I are really excited to tell you that we plan on bringing you through one of those case study experiences during a workshop meeting in the first half of this school year. So we're really excited about that opportunity as well. For a part of one day, we had Sarah, Sarah Gleason from Shipman and Goodwin, who came to work with us with all of the new Title IX legislation. And while I can't say that I was excited to have that conversation, it was a really rich, thoughtful conversations that our principals and assistant principals particularly needed and knew was important and came to with a lot of seriousness and compassion and care for our students. Title IX legislation continues to be evolving. It continues to be challenging. I know that I've told the board that, that some of the overage in our legal line this year was due to managing Title IX concerns as they arise. And so we had a really thoughtful conversation focused on our own practice with a really talented and thoughtful and reflective attorney who was able to help those principals sort of hone their practice. And that was, was just really exciting as well. There were two really busy days with a lot of good thinking and learning going on. A lot of good work came out of it. Never before have we had 14 of our own teachers come through one of those sessions with, with the leadership team. And I'm really excited about the, sort of the partnership that it built and the strength that it built and continuing to do this work with you. We don't have plans to bring a Title IX presentation to all of you during a workshop meeting. But if we, if, if we find the need to do that, we can do that as well. We're really excited to, to show the thinking classroom model and to show the case study model to all of you this year. We think you're going to find it all really engaging. Our team really did. And before I close that portion, I just wanted to ask Jason and Emity if there was anything to add. You were there for the two days. Did I miss any of the highlights?
So thank you, it all.
It's just good to get off site. Once in a while.
Absolutely.
And I promised it would be brief. I apologize, but that does conclude my report.
Questions? All right. Thank you. Um, so we are now up to the board agenda. Nine point one is to act on personnel items. So we have been asked, the board has been asked to ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Laura Tribucci, I hope I pronounced that correctly. English MBDA teacher, that's a master-based diploma. Megan Chase, Guilford High School, English. Sandra Leon, Baldwin Middle School, Special Education. Erin Aquario, Melissa Jones, Elementary Music Teacher. Alex Lipka, Guilford Lakes Elementary School, Special Ed. Marissa Capasso, Guilford Lakes Kindergarten. And Emily Shay, Guilford Lakes Speech Language Pathologist. Is there a motion to approve the appointment of these teachers?
Second.
Second. Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dick. That's everybody. Okay, we've been asked to ratify the appointment of the following administrator. Mikel Bridget Saza? How do I pronounce that?
Dick is Kaja.
Kaja. Special Education Coordinator for Baldwin and Adams. Is there a motion to ratify this appointment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, Dick, thank you. That's everybody. Um, and we've been asked to ratify the resignations of the following teachers. Brent Charpentier, District Technology Integration Specialist. Sabrina Houston, Adams Middle School, Special Education. Victoria Deng, two years, um, sorry, Guilford Lakes Elementary Art. And Amy Courtwright, Guilford Lakes Elementary, Grade Four. Is there a motion to ratify the resignation of these four teachers? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Dick is aye as well. So that is also unanimous vote. Thank you. All right. Nine point two, approve a donation of a violin, bow, and case valued at $5,150 to the GHS Music Department from a private individual. So we are being asked to approve, there is a letter here. A German IV IV violin circa 1950s, a Pernambuco wooden bow. And I'm really being challenged here.
Yeah, I cannot help you.
And a new Boba Lock case from a private individual, again, with a value of $5,150. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's wonderful. Dick is aye. So that's unanimous as well. That's a wonderful donation.
It's a beautiful donation.
Uh, nine point three is to act on budget transfers for the 22-23 school year. So approval is being requested at the board for following budget transfers to cover the over expenditures for the 22-23 fiscal year. So we are being asked for approval of a transfer to the legal line, $78,500, to purchase services, $191,000, to electricity, $165,000, to site improvements, $290,000, to regular transportation, $108,000, and to special education transportation, $400,000. That totals $1,232,500. And that these amounts would be transferred from salaries in the amount of $258,500, benefits in the amount of $699,000, tuition in the amount of $171,000, and supplies and materials in the amount of $104,000, which, as it should, also equals $1,232,500. So is there a motion to approve these budget transfers to cover the over expenditures for the 22-23 fiscal year? So move from.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dick? Okay, terrific. Thank you. So that's also unanimous vote, all six of us.
And I just want to make sure that we clarify for the community that while we are transferring those dollars to cover over expenditures, they are coming from portions of our budget that were under-expended. And what this does is it allows us to close the budget for the 22-23 school year in the black. We are closing the school budget officially with these transfers. And we finished the year within our budget as we are required to do.
Required to do. Correct.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Uh, nine point four is to act on awarding of the special education transportation bid. So what happens every year is, is that bid goes out for our various special education transportation runs to various institutions in which our children and students travel. Transportation companies are then allowed to bid on any or all of the particular runs. And then Guilford Public Schools takes those in and identifies the low bid. Our regular transportation company, as part of their contract, is allowed then to try to, Mrs. Trudeau, match or come in lower if they happen to on any of those bids?
They, they are just required to match.
Match. Okay. Um, so the, the board's approval is requested on the following bid. We have a bid of one, two, three, four, five, six, seven runs. They are being bid by two companies. Coordinated Transportation Solutions has been the low bidder for four of these runs. And STS Transportation LLC has been the low bidder for three of these runs. Both of these companies are companies we have worked with in the past. So we are familiar with these companies. Any other comments from my colleagues before we vote on this?
Linda, I didn't ask this question during the operations meeting, but of these, are these all existing runs or are some of them new runs? And the reason why I ask is because I didn't know if Specialty was covering any of them right now.
Specialty is not covering any of these right now. They are doing a couple of other runs for us. These bids were either existing all of last year or added at some point during the year last year. So the costs, as compared to what we had last year, are, are within reason of the prices that we've had in the past for these runs.
Okay.
And again, Specialty will have the opportunity if they want.
Correct.
Any other questions? All right. So again, we're being asked to approve, um, uh, these, uh, low bid rates for each of the seven runs. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Someone? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, and Dr. Cruz. All right. So that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. The Policy Committee.
Ready for policy?
Has been very, very, very busy. We have before us, um, a request to act on, act on revisions to seven either policy or regulations. And then the removal of three existing policy or regulations because they are being, in fact, replaced by one or more of the first seven. Our Policy Committee Chairs, I know they'll be here tonight, but I understand that Mrs. Baldwin is going to walk us through, um, each of these. And again, as, as you briefly describe each, um, I'll make, I'll have us make a motion to approve and discussion, and then we'll move on to the next.
I think also to note, we've reviewed these already.
Correct. You received these a month ago.
Absolutely.
And so even outside of policy during a regular meeting, we've reviewed these.
That's exactly right. So these are, that's exactly right. They were receive items last month. Mrs. Peck explained what they are. Mrs. Peck explained what they are, a lot of them, and Mrs. Baldwin can talk about this a little more, a lot of them are fairly substantial updates, but they are updates based on legislation that we are required to respond to.
So while they may be substantial, they're pretty simple in that this brings us in alignment with the new statutory language, and it's essentially the statutory language. Yep.
So.
Yay. So nine point five point one is policy number 5114. This is the age of attendance. Again, this is just simply updating the policy to follow the new state guidelines on age requirements.
And I did have one question about this, if I may, at the bottom of, well, number three, I guess, is the easiest way to say it on the first page, starts with until June 30th, 2023, which has already passed us. Is there a reason to keep that in?
I thought we had changed that till June 30th of every school year or something.
I think we could simply strike it to begin the paragraph with a student. Right, because, oh no, wait a minute.
No, I think it's, I think it's no longer relevant.
It's no longer irrelevant, so we should strike the whole item. Right, because it's replaced by number four at this point, which can start with a student. There's no longer a need for either of those date designations. So number three can be stricken.
I'm totally recognizing that the Policy Committee, when they first looked at this, June.
It was so long ago.
No, June 30th, it was not, was not behind them.
It was a current date.
That's right.
But I think you're right, so number three can be stricken, number four can start with a student 17 years of age, and then we just need to renumber.
Yeah, we can get rid of the July 1st date as well in number four.
Because it applies to everybody now. Yep.
And then four becomes three and five.
And yes, that was mentioned at the last meeting, we just didn't update that document for you.
That's okay. Are there any other questions about this policy?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of the revisions to policy 5114, including the one just mentioned to remove number three and reorder four and five, and take out that beginning July 1st, 2023, now we number three. Aye.
Oh, aye.
Sorry, that was a lot. And Dr. Hirsch is saying aye. Chrissy's like, is she gonna stop talking now? Is she done? Alright, so that is a unanimous vote on revisions to policy 5114.
Next. Next is policy 5118, attendance and excuses. This is to be in alignment with state regulations, the policy defines Guilford Public Schools' continued intention to monitor student attendance to prevent chronic truancy. So again, this is just to come in line with state statutes.
And I'll note that part of the revision is to change the name from attendance and excuses to attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism, which it now better reflects. Any questions about this policy 5118? Alright, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dr. Hirsch is raising his hand, so that's unanimous.
Onto regulation 5118. This regulation defines truancy, excused absences, acceptable forms of written documentation for excused absences, and new and significantly adds two mental health wellness days per student per year, although I thought that was in this year's already, wasn't it?
We may just be catching up with the policy.
We may just be catching up with the policy and regulation. But that's huge.
Yes.
Alright, so is there a motion to approve regulation 5118, updates to?
So moved. Second.
Second, alright, any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Hirsch, that is unanimous, thank you.
Now we're onto policy 5514, administering medications to students. This remains pretty similar to what it already was, but changes school nurse to quote "health services coordinator," end quote, that's the new title, and adds additional cosignatures of the parents and nurse with certain medications, again, to fall into line with state statute.
Excellent, is there a motion to approve policy 5514 as updated?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dr. Hirsch, that's unanimous, thank you.
And for regulation 5514, it's the same changes to be made within the regulation.
Just so for people watching, I think you'll note in the handbook, not 100% across board, but typically, we have a policy and then a regulation for most of the issues that our policy manual addresses. So this is the regulation for the policy we just approved. And as you just said, reflects those updates. So is there a motion to approve regulation 5514 and amendments to?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Hirsch, I will note, there's, in this, the way it's written right now or the way it was corrected, there's a lettering mishap going on that Terry or someone just may want to correct, it goes A, C, D, A, E.
That's not good, we'll fix that.
Her thing's got a little muddled in the updates. Alright.
Okay, policy 5005, bullying and violence. In order to follow national and state regulations, we have amended our policy. Highlights in the new policy are a prohibition of any form of bullying, including cyberbullying and teen dating violence. The new policy requires establishment of a safe school climate plan, which will be submitted to the state for review. Additionally, the policy defines procedures for reporting, including timelines for such reporting.
And this, some of these things were in here before, and now we're getting updated language around them.
Yes, again, we are doing much of this in practice, but this brings us in line with the language requirements of the new statutes, yes.
This was all kind of intermingled with Title IX previously, correct? Now it's separated.
Separated out, and the legislature just updated this again, so it'll be for the 24, 25 school year, so we'll be looking at it later in the year again.
Right, okay. Keeping us on our toes. Alright, is there a motion to approve updates to policy 5005?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Dr. Hirsch, wonderful, that's unanimous, thank you.
The next one is the revisions to the regulation for 5005, school climate, safe school climate plan. This defines the district's desire for physically, emotionally, and intellectually safe, I'm having a hard time with words today too, safe educational environment within Guilford Public Schools, and it outlines the definitions of bullying and subsequent consequences. This plan expressly prohibits any form of bullying behavior and teen dating violence on school grounds, at any school-related event, on buses, et cetera, or through any electronic device owned or leased by the board. The regulation defines the positive school climate, outlines prevention and intervention strategies, and defines what constitutes bullying. Further, this regulation defines leadership and administrative responsibilities, procedures for reporting, timelines for responding to allegations of acts of bullying. We have also updated the forms for reporting and investigating.
Right, so again, while we had all of those prohibitions in place, then the state has changed some of the important definitions, and we needed to update our policy to be in alignment with new definitions and possibly change timelines and expectations.
Terrific, alright, is there a motion to approve updates to regulation 5005?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Hirsch is raising his hand, that's unanimous. Alright.
Nine point five point eight is removing policy 5006, titled cyberbullying. Again, that was just incorporated in the policy we just amended.
Okay, terrific. So is there a motion then to remove policy 5006, cyberbullying, as it has been incorporated and updated in another policy?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Hirsch, that's a unanimous vote, thank you.
Nine point five point nine is removing policy 5122, attendance and truancy, again, we just amended that.
Excellent, so is there a motion to remove 5122?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Hirsch, that's unanimous, thank you.
And lastly, nine point five point 10 is to remove regulation 5122 related to attendance and truancy.
Is there a motion to approve the removal of regulation 5122?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Hirsch, thank you, that's unanimous as well, wonderful.
With thanks to the Policy Committee, that was a lot.
Absolutely. And just so, again, our viewing public knows, our, all the Board of Ed policies are on the Guilford Public Schools website, they can be found under the Guilford Board of Education tab, or the Board of Education tab. What will happen with something like this is that now that we have approved these, these changes will be incorporated, updated into clean policies and regulations. They will be in the near future put into the document that is online, and then each of us, who has a very large binder sitting somewhere in our home, will get paper copies in order to remove what we voted out and put no ones in. But please know, these won't appear right away, but will appear fairly quickly in an update, and the policy handbook is online and available to anyone interested. Alright, number 10, reports of committees, policy committee, could you possibly have something here to say?
No.
No, okay.
But we'll be meeting in September.
Right, 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 thank you so much. Alright, Operations Committee, anything more to add?
I think the biggest thing to highlight is just how busy the facilities team is, this time of the year is always super busy, but you know, this has been an especially busy summer for everyone on the facilities team, so thank you to everybody. And as Dr. Freeman alluded to, we closed out the budget in the black. Thank you, Linda Trudeau, for all your efforts that you do to balance that budget and make it seem easy.
It's a team effort, I've got a good team behind me that helps.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Mr. Delviter, I don't know, I know that Mr. Burnham noted that with the completion of the tennis courts projects, there's some, I didn't know if you wanted to highlight that.
It is absolutely worth highlighting, so thank you. Since the completion of Guilford High School, every single athletic facility and field has been updated to this date. So with the completion of our Guilford High School tennis courts, which are really well underway, concrete being poured today, once that project is complete, every athletic facility here with the high school, with every athletic student, has been new.
It's really exciting.
Very exciting. Dr. Hirsch, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, do you have anything to report out?
Nothing new.
Nothing new, okay, thank you. And I believe the committee will be meeting at the end of October next. Any liaisons to town committees that have school-related stuff to report out? Okay. And Lauren Board of Directors, as that gets started up again, we will definitely get on top of figuring out a solution to that. Okay, we are to agenda item number 11. This is a public comment, not necessarily limited to the Board of Ed agenda. We're going to ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please. The board may choose at the end of 30 minutes if it's on the same topic to close, but we always have the option to extend. Public comment, again, is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about their views, it is the role of the board to listen to public comments. The board will refrain from answering questions or engaging in dialogue with the commenters. If there are questions that do need a response, there are many avenues in which we will make sure we get the appropriate response back to you. So is there anyone who would like to address the board in public comments tonight? Welcome you to come up and just actually give your name and address for the minutes. Anybody?
Anita Porto, 135 Merrilling. Hello. What I really want to say is, thank you. And Dr. Freeman, you are my hero. Your letter was so powerful and so moving and so on target. I just wish we could plaster it all over the town, so everyone could read it all the time. And for the board and for the public, I want to say, we live in a democratic republic, and we elect people to represent us. You have been elected to represent us. And I trust you. And people need to understand that because you have been duly elected, they need to let you do your job. And I trust our librarians, and I trust our teachers, and the faculty, because you have hired incredible people. And people need to understand that while it's okay to disagree with people, it's okay to come up here and complain, it is not okay to be rude, to be disruptive, to threaten people, and to make our teachers have to focus on anything except teaching our children. And they should never have to be afraid, and neither should any of you. So I thank you, I am one person that has your back, one of many, many. And it's enough now, the nonsense has to stop with threatening. And I also want to just say one more time, the books are necessary, the representation is necessary, and it is a slippery slope to ever think of banning a book. That's my opinion, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great, come on up.
John Fenn, 311 School Sideline. Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board, members of the public, I apologize in advance that you're going to have the misfortune of listening to me for the next two minutes and 45 seconds. I have a stream of consciousness here that I'm hoping will come out as a coherent presentation. Wanted to second what Anita said, but I also wanted to address this discussion of the coming book ban next month. And the address has to do with contextual misrepresentation. I'm not speaking specifically to any of the books that are banned, but generally, contextual, you have a contextual misappropriation and misrepresentation of the substance. And when you have misrepresentation of the context, it can be used, and has been used, to misguide, to rob others of their agency, to incite violence, to deny people their human rights and basic liberties, and justify atrocities. This is not just with regard to books, this has happened throughout human history. Failure to provide context, intentional miscommunication, misconstruence of, and misconstruence have swayed small-minded people, intentionally and misfortunately ignorant individuals, and those blinded by demagoguery to do horrible things. Almost done. Consider that in many places of the world. And ostensibly, some places in our own nation, slavery, freedom, and bondage haven't been abolished, rather, they've been replaced by demagoguery and megalomania, which enslave the masses, feeding on manufactured fear of others and promises of wealth, salvation, or simply survival. Intellectual freedom harms no one. In an era where every high schooler and many middle schoolers have regular access to the internet, their exposure to violence, obsessive, offensive, subversive, and inappropriate material is pervasive. Before books are banned, we should first ask ourselves, what are Before books are banned, we should first ask ourselves, what are we allowing our children to watch and to access? The onus is on us as parents to parent our children. If one finds something offensive, our own proclivities should not be forced on others who don't share our views. We are responsible for the media that our children read, that they watch, and that they consume. The failure to guide our own children is not the fault of a piece of literature. It's easy to see what we only wish to see. Thank you. To be blinded by a perception, respectfully ask, when you make the consideration that you don't be given, not given to the limited snippets, but to the work as a whole. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Hey. Happy summer. I'm Barbara Hargraves. I live at 284 Lanterns Way, and I'm here for two things. First of all, I sent an email to you guys, like, I don't know, May or June, about the choice, why can't I remember the name of this? Thank you. The Open Choice Program. And I never got back to say thank you so much. Everybody, you guys put off, you know, voting, and you discussed it at the next meeting. I was not here in person, but I did watch, and I am very happy that we are moving forward with that, so I wanted to say thanks. And then two, I'm here in regards to the, the book challenges that are going to be discussed, I'm guessing in the fall. You know, no one is really arguing with any parent's decision whether a book is appropriate or not for their child to read. And, but my concern as a parent is that one parent's decision or multiple parents' opinions could affect the ability of books to be in our libraries for our children, for all of our children to read. If I don't want my kids to read a book, that's my deal, right? But I don't, I don't have the right to have that book removed for other children to read. So I'm just, I know that you're not ready to discuss this yet. I have read all the books that are in question, and as a parent, I feel like these books need to be in the school, and I think that the primary, the primary focus of your decision really should be not whether or not a parent has a right to say to their child, I don't want you to read this book, but really, does that parent have the right to take the book out of the hands of all of the students in our, in our schools? So that's it. Thanks. Have a great night.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Rob Bitterici, 230 Village Pond Road. I'd come here a few months ago to talk about preschool expansion, and we've been discussing over email, I forgot it's supposed to be stated facts, not questions, so I'll try to reframe my questions as stated comments here. The conversation that Dr. Freeman was having about the enrollment incoming students, it seems to me that that preschool expansion idea I had could be one way to sort of smooth out differing enrollment classes as the kindergarten classes come in. If you have different sizes and you have capacity that you're trying to move around, that could be one way to sort of even things out in terms of your, your facilities and physical capacity that you have in the town. And the other thing that came to mind as you were talking about the different enrollment sizes across the other towns, I don't know if there's any legal reasons precluding having students, like, maybe who live on the border of districts, from going, from, like, you know, like, maybe from Guilford Lakes to Calvin Lea, for example, versus having to move teachers around? It's not a question, that was a stated comment. So yeah, I'm, I'm going to continue to, you know, discuss this stuff with Katie, as I have been, and I'll follow up with her, but those are some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, anybody else like to address the board in public comment?
David Mulillo, 135 Merrill Lane. Just, I guess, to say once again, thank you for all that you're doing. It's important work, and you're doing it better than the other districts I've seen. And there's a, there's a point where there's a difference between disagreement and obstruction, and we need to be careful, because some people, when they disagreed and then they put it to a vote and they dramatically lost, there was followed up by book challenge, and it was followed up by lawsuit. And it's really just stuff that creates extra work in doing what you need to do. And I, I don't think that kind of sabotage is part of the democratic method, or part of us talking out our differences. I think it is sabotage. I'm concerned what's going to happen, and we hit an election year, and what's going to be going on, excuse me. But once again, thank you, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board tonight?
All right. So we, the board is in the process, board members are in the process of reviewing the five texts, and again, we are going to be talking about it in September, at a September meeting. And just in terms of the preschool request for consideration of preschool at various schools, as, as I think I've, I've talked to Mr. Bitterici before, as one can imagine, there are a lot of things to think about, including space, including teachers, including budget. But, but we're also always welcoming requests and input from the community, and we'll continue to look at the possibilities around things that people are interested in seeing us pay attention to. I, I don't think, we, we do have districts that are defined, and so the process of, of stretching those becomes problematic when, even when it seems like it would be an easy solution. So it is, those are, those are kind of well-defined things. But again, when members of the community have things they'd like us to, to think about or look into, we always welcome it. So thank you. All right. We are going to be not adjourning, because we, the board, have an executive session. When we come out of executive session, there's not going to be any further vote or board discussion. It's, we're simply going to adjourn. So I'm going to now ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second? Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight.